We'll call to order the Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting for November 19th, 2013. Welcome everybody and please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and the Swoop to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As we look to the flag of the state of Minnesota, let's see it symbol of perfect friendship among the United Nations.
So, everybody in the audience knows Commissioner Ramos is on via phone today. First item on the agenda is the approval of the regular meeting agenda.
Chairman, would you make a motion to approve the regular meeting agenda?
Can I have a second?
There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion on that emotion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item is public input. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes and any individual who'd like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on a future agenda. Request forms are available in the County Commissioners' office. Is there anybody today here for public input on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, we'll move on. Minutes.
Chairman?
Yes.
Would you make a motion to approve the minutes for October 31st, 2013, regular meeting minutes?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes for October 31st, 2013. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Financial reports. John, you want to go over the expenditure report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. In your packet you have the expenditure report dated November 18th, 2013. It's for $1,301,448.50. Really, there's no extraordinary items, it's just business. The one, I guess largest, one of the largest payments is the indigent fund at $56,467.40, which those are the payments that we pay out based on the Commission approving the indigent payments each meeting. Otherwise, it's just normal expenditures for payroll and operating.
Chairman, I can move to approve the expenditure report for November 18th, 2013.
Can I have a second?
There's a motion to approve the expenditure report for November 18th, 2013. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving into new business, we have a presentation on broadband expansion in the southwest COG region. Priscilla, are you going to facilitate that? You'll need to turn on your microphone.
Let me just press this button. There we go. Good morning and thank you for having us today. Ron was at the Hila EDA roundtable the other day and he really was excited about what we're working with broadband in the region. So, I'm just going to give you a little bit of background in that and then I'll have Susan, who's really the person that's working with the consultant and evaluating the broadband throughout the southwest region. So, there was an application process for us to be selected or for an entity, a couple of entities to be selected to do a regional broadband implementation plan. So, one of the things that I think that was kind of the selling point in actually receiving this implementation plan was the fact that we have been working regionally through the stronger economies together. We talked about how we had the memorandum of understanding and so that was kind of what helped us get to where we are today. We've been working regionally on that as well as the renewable energy and so we have found that that memorandum has really helped us in a lot of ways to be able to move forward with getting these types of plans or funding for our area because we are looking at things from a regional perspective. So, as much as I didn't really know about broadband, I actually did the application on behalf of the region. And what it required was for me to evaluate every local government, every school district, the universities, the medical centers, healthcare clinics, and look at their capacity in broadband. It didn't take long for me to realize that we are really lacking in the broadband capacity in the southwest region. So, now I found, Susan kind of stalked me for a few months to push me to apply for this because she really knew about the need more than I did. So, it's great that we were one of two, one of four, I think, that applied. And so, two of the four were selected to receive this consulting group to help us with the broadband implementation plan. So, with that, we have a consultant that's out of Washington DC that's working with us out of the region. But Susan Oberlander is also part of that team and she's based out of Santa Fe. So, with that, Susan, I'm going to bring you up so you can talk about where we've come as far as the broadband implementation plan and what are the next steps. I will say this, that part of the application, it was a requirement that we develop a technology team. So, we have a technology team that was actually put together at the application phase. The technology team has been meeting on a regular basis to discuss the needs in the communities. And so, with that, Susan, I'll turn it over to you so you can talk about some of the things that you've done with the broadband.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you very much, Priscilla, and thank you for inviting me. I actually have worked in Santa Fe for a lot of my life, but I am not a resident of Santa Fe. I'm a resident of Rio, Rio好吧 county for 35 years, which is why my heart is in this project because I have been a rural resident and I know exactly what it's like to be a rural resident. As I've told other people in this room, have you noticed how many times you drive to Albuquerque for a meeting and how few times anybody from Albuquerque comes to where you are? Well, that's certainly true for all of us who live out of the major metropolitan areas of the state. And it's not a, I'm not condemning people in Albuquerque, I'm just saying that rural residents need to defend their interests, I think, more proactively perhaps than in rural, than in very urban areas. So, that's my heart. I've been to, I have worked in the area of telecommunications regulation at the Public Regulation Commission and I've also began my career and ended my working career as a librarian. I was the director of libraries at Northern New Mexico College in Espanola for 14 years and I ended my career as the state librarian in charge of the State Library of New Mexico. I'm now retired. I've given you a handout today that is one of the work products of the project that is called the New Mexico Broadband Mapping Project that was federally funded as a stimulus project. All 50 states received this funding in order to create a broadband map for their state in order to determine where there was broadband and where there was not. The gap analysis being the means of trying to fill those gaps. So, this map book, our screenshots from, it looks like this, our screenshots from the mapping project for this four county area that we're working with in this, yeah, they're all here, the four counties, that we're working with for this project. One thing about the map is that it's not amazingly precise and it relies on input from providers. The telephone and wireless and the broadband industry is a competitive industry and the mapping project must maintain some confidentiality on behalf for the providers in order to receive the information. So, it's kind of aggregated information rather than house-by-house information. House-by-house information is proprietary information and I'm sure that you would understand that a large company or a small company would not be interested in sharing that with its competitors because increasingly, the good news is there are competitors. It was not such a monolithic structure and I believe that's the reason that we may actually make progress in this area in terms of enhancing broadband coverage. If you have, you will notice on the bottom of every page, every map, it says contact and a New Mexico Broadband@state.nm.us. I would encourage anybody who has information or questions about the map coverage to actually make that contact because that helps refine the precision of the mapping and it may benefit the whole region therefore. We have, we've started the project, as Priscilla said, with Priscilla writing the application, a very good application, and creating the technology group which represents all four counties and is a very lively group, a very informed group. And we began by looking at the overall coverage in the four county area. An early decision of the group was to focus on unserved areas and because there are federal, because unserved was a priority of the group and because unserved areas have the possibility of federal funding. So, we have been looking at where there may be unserved areas in the four county area that we're working with. I would encourage anyone who knows of unserved areas to contact Priscilla and try, because in our, using the maps is not actually the most precise way to find them. We're working with all the local providers who actually are the best way to find unserved areas with varying success of getting information. So, one of our primary projects right now is identifying unserved areas in order to apply for grants like Community Connect Grants that are from the Rural Utility Service at the US Department of Agriculture and would build probably generally fixed wireless systems in those areas. The second thing that we're starting, we just began yesterday with the technology group, is looking at the area generally to gather information on broadband availability. Because this project was designed as a rural empowerment project, not a federal handout, not a federal come-in-and-fix project, but ways of giving local counties, cities, and citizens information that they share to band together in a group large enough to get the attention of a provider. I bet everybody in this room has made, as a private citizen, has made a call to a provider and with varying success and how important you felt you were to that provider. That's happened to everybody. I mean, the small numbers game, we understand. However, if a provider comes into a room with a county commissioner, with a mayor, with very informed and interested citizens to have a conversation and if that group has information about gaps, about what is needed, about what they want, it is my experience that that's a very different conversation and the outcomes may be very different. So, we're trying to get away from the onesie game. I mean, we would hope, I do not believe providers are unfeeling or uncaring, but it's just hard to take one complaint at the same way as a group, a formal political subdivision of the area that has information. So, yesterday, we began the supply and demand analysis, the process of a supply and demand analysis for the four counties. It'll probably be done county by county and it will look at, it will look at community demand, looking at the anchor institutions, the schools, the libraries, the small business, government offices, which is kind of an easy search to make, an information search to make. And we're going to survey residential users, which will probably be done with a sampling process with Bieber, who is also on contract to work on this project. And we're going to ask questions such as what you have right now and how is it working? How much it costs? What you don't have, what you would like to have? And create a map of deficiencies, gaps, as well as an aggregate demand. Because I think aggregate demand will have an impression on providers of all kinds and may attract new providers. I've been impressed while I'm here at hearing from people who are interested in various wireless possibilities. There are federal funds, for instance, for wireless carriers to create 4G wireless hotspots and capable of being a broadband site. There are fixed wireless companies. Transworld Network has already entered. I hear varying assessments of their reliability, but that's not an indication of what fixed wireless can do. That may be an indication of one company using that technology. Fixed wireless is a really good possibility for remote rural and also geographically difficult areas where trenching would be very, very expensive. And we're also working with Western, the local rural telco here, they have been very forthcoming. I'm starting to work with Century Link in Albuquerque, talking to them about sharing information. As you know, they have a Community Connect Fund Grant right now that is doing a lot of upgrades in this area. They are still reluctant to tell me what they're doing right now in this area, but they have 12 to 17 projects, I think, and they're going to be completed before, I think, into 2013, before the next year. So, I know that, for instance, there isn't much Comcast, not much cable, but I know that Silver City is renewing the franchise right now and that's a good time to look at conditions, terms and conditions, that may help extend broadband in some parts of Grant County, but will not do much for some of the other counties. So, that's kind of the process that we're, that we have, where we are right now. And as I said, it's an empowering process to give local entities information that will help them negotiate with providers. And I would, I would again reiterate that anything you know about out-of-surface, out-of, no-surface areas and underserved areas, unserved or underserved areas, that would be great if you could communicate with Priscilla at any time and she can send it on to me. I realize that this map book does not have my contact information. I can leave cards for you. Could I have questions from the group?
Sure. Do you want to go first?
Okay. I think probably that one of the big problems we have in this area with broadband is when we have Western New Mexico Telephone Company, its areas are covered pretty well. You can be in a pretty rural area and still have broadband with Western New Mexico Telephone Company. Our problem is with Century Link. And Western, I live in Hanover, which is a non-served area with broadband at all. There's, I don't know exactly how many residents there are, but there's enough for a precinct and they're underserved, non-served.
But you have dial-up?
You could have dial-up. We chose to do away with having a phone if they're not going to give us proper services.
And that's Century Link territory?
Mm-hmm. But WNMU, or not WNMU, WNM Communications is just over the hill and they would give them to me, except there's some agreement that they can't, they can't cross that line. So, once again, a little competition would be good for Century Link because I would so go with the other one. I have teenage kids, internet's important, they don't even give out textbooks in the school districts anymore, you have to look them all up online. So, we spend a lot of money on Verizon internet. So, thank you.
Yes, and that's, you know, that's the reason whenever I heard this presentation, I thought it was so important for you to come and get it on cats and talk to us about it and such. This is a great example from the chairman here, is that communication in rural New Mexico is very, very important. We live here for a reason and one of the downside of it is good communication. The fact I hadn't thought about education when you did your presentation, they talked about, you know, people come here and have their business at home. So, it's really important to be able to have service. And then, health, wise, communication as far as fires and just a multitude of things is important. So, in rural New Mexico, and particularly southwest New Mexico, this is important to try to cover as many areas as possible. And I want to thank you and Priscilla for the work that you've done on this and anything I can do, I'm all for you. And John will tell you, he had to tell, he had to teach me how to turn on my cellphone when I took office, so. But I'm learning real quick with these two, I'm learning real quick.
So, is broadband under the auspices of PRC?
No. It's a federal issue. You can make complaints to the PRC and they will be brought-
Telecom companies?
To the what?
Are they over the telephone companies, telecom?
Well, broadband itself is maintained, the authority to oversee it is maintained at the federal level and the PRC, and the FCC. I think it started because there was-
You're talking about wireless though, right?
And broadband.
Okay.
I mean, we can't file, we could not, we could not formally pursue protests about broadband. However, sometimes billing, it could be handled as a billing dispute because if you're paying and you're not getting it, that seems like fraud when you're looking at billing.
Yeah.
So, you could look at billing.
The states do, yeah. Another subject.
Yeah, and the commissioners, you know, your commissioner is not from Grant County and I can't say his name, it's-
Paul.
Yeah, it's been a while since I've been at the PRC.
He's in Las Cruces.
You can talk to the PRC commissioner because you can file, the customers do file complaints over broadband and sometimes they can be handled as billing disputes. But also, the commissioners are often interested and it's another political pressure point.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
John, Priscilla, appreciate your time and your efforts. Okay, next item on the agenda is the presentation from the Visitor Center, quarterly report on the interpretation of tourism fulfillment for the county contract. Stacy, here she goes.
I'm glad to be here today to give you the quarterly update for tourism at the Visitor Center. As you know, we coordinate with the Grant County Tourism Committee and we have information for you as far as the Visitor Center, also mailings and a little bit of trending, which hopefully we'll be able to continue to actually show you how things may be shifting here in the-
Can you hear it now?
I can hear you, but that's just close to the-
The volume's following you. There we go. All right. Chairman, Commissioners, staff, and community, I'm glad to be here today to give you the first quarter report from the Visitor Center and tourism fulfillment. I'm going to also speak to you today about some trending. We're starting to really try to work numbers and determine what's going on as far as our visitation. We're very pleased to work so closely with the Grant County Tourism Committee and this first graph is one that you've seen before. This is actually looking at the monthly totals and you'll notice in July, we only have two years of data and that is because we didn't start doing fulfillment services until August of 2011. One thing I want to point out to you, the green bars are this year in spite of the fact that we had forest fires, in spite of the fact, I'm going to let you know that in October, we were actually at 1,601 visitors. So, in spite of the shutdown, tourism is actually up and so we're feeling very good about that. We'll talk to you some more in the future about some of the methods that are being utilized to promote tourism. But the other thing that we're finding is the number of people are staying more just one or two nights. So, we're going to start trying to find ways, of course, of enticing them to stay longer. We have some people that are coming in to relocate, but other than that, we have a huge drop-off after two nights. So, people coming up for weekends and then basically heading back home. This graph basically shows you where people are coming from. And you'll see the area in green, which is the southwest, 34%. This is where a lot of the marketing is being focused right now, Sunset Magazine. So, we're getting people from El Paso, Tucson, Phoenix, California, and Colorado. And this is the area that the State Tourism Office is also focusing on. So, we see a huge chunk there. We also see 14% from Silver City and Grant County and that's actually really important to us. This is locals that are starting to come in to see what the Visitor Center has to offer. Maybe they're coming in to use the restrooms, but we're finding the number-one way that people find out about Silver City and Grant County is from friends and family. So, we also have a lot of people that are coming in and picking up packets of information and sending them out. So, we feel very positive about that. Then we see other areas in New Mexico, there's a lot going on as far as trying to get that drive traffic in from Albuquerque, Santa Fe, Taos, and the rest of the US. As far as breaking out areas of the US, I have a packet for you that you'll get and we've broken it out by state, but also by region. And the number-one region where we're drawing tourists from is, of course, the southwest. The number-two area is the Pacific West. And we're starting to see a lot of that right now, the snowbirds coming through, a lot of people from Alaska actually looking at relocating here. Unlike what we thought, it used to be the Midwest, the Midwest is actually now fifth. The third area is the southeast and the fourth area is the mid-Atlantic. So, we're starting to look at that, we'll look at that across the different seasons and see if we see trending there, but it is getting interesting. This is showing the computer station that we have at the Visitor Center. We also have Wi-Fi available to visitors. We have a lot of folks coming in. This is actually a local person coming in. So, again, it's a great resource for people if, sometimes they're just trying to get a map maybe to go down to Las Cruces, so they'll come in and ask us for that. So, we're actually providing a great service to our local residents as well. This is the conference room and in previous presentations, I mentioned to you that we really wanted to become the community hub. So, we have a lot of nonprofit organizations that are scheduling to use the conference room. These tables and chairs were recycled from the Silver City Public Library. And you'll see the very colorful design on the wall, that's actually from the Clay Festival. They actually turned this into one of the projects. So, it's turned into a piece of art and we're real happy about seeing people come in and enjoy that. As far as attractions, we've broken it out as far as what people are coming to see. 31% say they're coming to see downtown. Probably most interesting to you is 28% of the people are here to experience the Hila, whether it's the Cliff Dwellings, the National Forest, or the Trail to Mount Spirit Scenic Byway. And at my last presentation, I mentioned to you that we're really promoting the Scenic Byway. That's a wonderful opportunity. We, in spite of the fires, were able to send people around the loop. In spite of the shutdown, we were able to send people around the loop and it gives them a great experience of what we have to offer. And so, 28% of the people are doing that. Some folks just had a catch-all, they said they're here to see everything. That was 13%. Events is 8%. That may be a little bit high because what we do is often, if there's going to be a tour of some nature, maybe to the Clay Festival or the Hila, Burda Nature Festival, they, River Festival, they will start in the Visitor Center parking lot. We open up early so that they have facilities available and they will enter into the guest register that they're there for an event. The museums, 6%. That's really important when we cannot send people out to the Cliff Dwellings, they're closed due to the flood. We keep them right in Silver- Uh, we keep them right in Silver City and Grant County, again, on the loop, or trying to have them experience the museums that we have, two wonderful museums, of course, the University Museum, Silver City Museum. Their visitation is up about 20%. Uh, we're also seeing that people just have a great time, they come back in before they leave town and tell us, "We've had a wonderful time, we'll just come back and see the Cliff Dwellings another time." So, uh, we're feeling good about that. The galleries is about 4%, shops, 3%. Vacation, family and friends, 3%. Dining, 2%, but we are getting a lot of recognition for our fine restaurants now. People coming in specifically to dine. And then, of course, hiking and camping. Uh, this picture is, uh, one of the Silco, possible Silco chairs. And, uh, right now, we're allowing people to come in and sit down, and we'll have a couple other versions there for people to try to choose which chair they would like to see go into the Silco Theater. So we're working with, uh, the Silver City Main Street Project, uh, to try to promote that project and, and again, have more community input. This is an article that was in Money Magazine, and it was actually talking about wineries, and they ended up at our visitor's center. And suddenly, we're told about, uh, all of our great opportunities, uh, and started talking about the Murray Hotel, the Palace Hotel, the Georgetown Cabins. Uh, so we got some great exposure in the national magazine, and of course, we had the, uh, New York Times article, uh, that was in, uh, talking more about the restaurants. But we're trying to get more of that sort of coverage that will allow us to actually get some taglines we can use in the future. And again, get back to, you know, some of the, the best retirement areas in the United States, things of this nature that we can utilize in a lot of the marketing. And above and beyond everything, we've got personal service, we've got, uh, a lot of knowledge and compassion. Right now, we have 13 volunteers and seven part-time volunteers. Uh, we are working, um, with conferences and events that are planning to come to town. We are the Tourism Association of New Mexico Chamber member for our region. Uh, I already mentioned to you about the museums and tourism being up, but also the interest in real estate. Uh, not only downtown are there a lot of people interested because of the mixed-use zoning where they can live and work in the same place, but we are seeing, uh, a huge influx of folks right now, uh, looking at buying homes in Grant County. So we're feeling very good about that. Of course, when we look at economic development, uh, that really goes a long way. That, that brings in the grocery receipts taxes, that brings in the property taxes. So this is another way that the county's money is, is coming back. Uh, we also, um, work very closely as far as the university. We've been providing, uh, orientation tours to both parents and students. That was taking place in August. And, uh, this photo right here is actually a group of nine people from Switzerland that called up in advance, about a month in advance of their trip. They stayed up at Little Toad, uh, spent a lot of time up in the Gila National Forest, and then came down for a personal tour of downtown. It was about an hour and a half tour. Uh, but we're more than willing to do that, we meet people after hours, we're starting to meet the bus tours that are coming into town. So really, we're, uh, we're trying to expand our services, building community and public relations, and, uh, just making sure you're getting a good return on your tourism investment dollar. Are there any questions at all?
Yeah. Sissy, I was wondering, when you're talking about, uh, people coming in, uh, maybe relocating and such, and just to visit. Uh, one of my concerns is retirees versus families. Uh, the school numbers are going down as far as students and such, and I'm wondering, what are we doing, or is there some kind of indicator that we're working on families, rather than just retirees, which I have no problem with, I'm one. Uh, but do we have anything on that, or any kind of-
We do have some families. Normally, they're, when they're moving here, they're looking for employment. So that's where we've got to work more on the, on the job opportunities. Uh, we've seen an influx, we, uh, we put packets together for HMS. They were in the, uh, out actually looking to bring in two doctors. So we work with them, we work with the hospital, we work with the university. Uh, but as far as creating jobs, uh, at this point with tourism, we are, uh, trying to work more with, uh, with actually tourism as far as the visitor's center. Uh, but then we do work with the businesses, and that's something where we just, the more people we can bring in, uh, the more jobs that will grow. And, uh, I think that's the big picture, but we need to work, work more on that.
But are we working on the families to come here and visit, Cole? I mean, besides living here?
Definitely. In fact, um, there was a, uh, a new campaign that's been launched called 101 Things to Do, and, uh, that received excellent, uh, response. Uh, state, the state tourism office loved it, we've actually got, the tourism website now has that with links going out. And the Grant County Health Council loved it so much, they are now picking up and going to run a parallel piece, which is 101 Things for Kids to Do. So we've got to work on trying to promote what we do have, uh, in order to promote children coming. Uh, when they come, part of the, part of the things, they'll go to the community-built park, they'll go out to the forest. The mural project is huge. Uh, we've got people coming in from Europe to go see the mural project. So we do try to promote it as a family-friendly experience. Uh, but again, as far as getting people to move here, that's something we've all got to work at.
Thank you.
Sure.
Sissy, I had an opportunity this summer to be in, be in the Phoenix International Airport, and I saw the New Mexico True Program campaign that Secretary Jacobson's doing with, in conjunction with Southwest Airlines. Um, and I was going to suggest that since the Rite Amendment is going to change the way air flight happens in New Mexico, uh, they're saying Albuquerque could potentially lose 45% of their flights because they've been a benefit of the Rite Amendment, where Southwest couldn't fly out of Texas with, over an adjacent state. So Albuquerque was one of the places that they landed to go to California, Arizona, wherever. Uh, but the campaign that they're doing in conjunction with, with Southwest was stating that they had a direct flight to Albuquerque from Phoenix. Um, well, so do we. And I wonder if you guys have contemplated talking with Great Lakes Airlines and seeing if we could get something in conjunction with them, saying, "We're, we're a direct flight," especially in the summer, I would put the temperatures, the average temperatures on it or something. I'm not a marketing expert, but I know that when you're sitting in 120 degrees, 86 looks great.
Exactly, uh, what we have been doing. George Julian Doran, the tourism director, uh, has been working with Great Lakes. In fact, uh, he worked to have a piece in the in-flight magazine and kind of missed the mark, so, uh, we're kind of getting credited for another one. Uh, but one of the great things we're realizing is, uh, is that linkage and that escape opportunity for people in Phoenix to come over for the weekend. Uh, also Frontier Airlines partners with Great Lakes. So, uh, just by happenstance, uh, somebody in one of our offices went to try to get a last-minute flight up to Denver, and it was like only $61 or $68 to fly out of Grant County Airport over to Phoenix. So we're starting to really work that market. Uh, we also have a gentleman that, uh, is a graduate of Western New Mexico University, works over in Phoenix. And so he's also trying to coordinate with us as far as getting that Phoenix, Phoenix market, uh, to come over and utilize Great Lakes for a weekend excursion.
Yeah, what you bring up, Sheriff, about the- And I have a brother in Cholo, and, uh, their population grows during the summer up to 30,000 from 10, and, and they bring them up out of the valley. And some of them have a second home or rent, uh, in Cholo, uh, that come up, so it's a good market.
Believe me, we had folks this year, you know, we were all kind of whining because the monsoons were late. It seemed warm to us, and these folks were like, "Oh, this is absolutely wonderful." So we had a lot of people coming up to cool off for a weekend or a week.
Cool by nature.
You bet.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody else? Thank you very much, Sissy.
Thanks, Sissy, appreciate your time and your work.
Next item on the agenda is contracts and agreements.
And you did have a handout for us, or this stuff, I couldn't, I couldn't understand.
Initiate.
Initiate, okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No problem. Next item on the agenda is contracts and agreements, approve or disapprove, Agreement Number A 1327, New Mexico Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management Subgrant Agreement. You want to go over that, John?
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. Um, this agreement is for the Sheriff's Stone Garden operations. It's $245,638. Uh, this is about the fifth year we've had Stone Garden. Um, it's slowly depleting. Um, back in the beginning, it was closer to a $2 million grant, now we're down to a $245,000. What this does is typically now, it's just paying for overtime of our officers to work the border, um, work terrorism and drug activities on the border. Uh, Sheriff wants to put in.
You want to add anything, Sheriff?
Just coming to thank you, um, what this does is it allows us to work in conjunction with, uh, four other counties, um, trying to work areas that we're having issues with the illegal drugs, smuggling, stuff like that. So this money is beneficial for us to operate. Uh, they have purchased us a lot of equipment, um, to be able to utilize down there. Um, so it's, it's a beneficial grant, and, uh, I support that we continue to do it.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Now, using this, are we working, I, I know the work you've been doing down south, but what about in the, in the, uh, more urban area that we have? I didn't think I'd ever say that about Grant County, but we do have somewhat of an urban area as far as Silver City, Beard, and such. Uh, are we utilizing that money and equipment in these areas also?
Yes, we are. We utilize a lot of the resources out on, on Highway 180 West, uh, towards Arizona border, down on 180 East headed towards Danning, and out in the east side of the state, uh, county. Um, we're also looking at bringing in, um, another entity to assist us with this, which is going to be a local entity to operate locally here and target the issues that we are having.
Yeah, because that's important. We do have a problem.
Sheriff? That's all we have, we need to get a motion to approve.
All right, to make a motion to approve, uh, Agreement A 1327, New Mexico Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management Subgrant Agreement.
I beg it.
The motion is second to approve A 1327, is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six, five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Resolution is approve or disapprove, Resolution Number R 1374. This is setting the polling locations for 2014 June primary and the November general elections. I assume, you want to go over that, Rob, or you?
Yeah. Just, we're going to basically use voting convenience centers once again in, in Grant County. Um, thankfully to Cliff High School and San Lorenzo that now have pretty good internet there, we'll be able to, uh, add those as voter convenience centers.
So you'll vote, wherever you live in the county, you will vote in any of these-
In any of these locations.
Yes, sir.
So we have, we're also going to have some rural precincts, again, you know, hopefully once Priscilla's group gets this broadband going, we'll be able to switch all of these to, uh, voter convenience centers. But right now, you know, unfortunately in Sapiro, the Red Rock area, um, the Hatchet area, we don't have that kind of service over there that'll keep us going throughout an entire, an election.
You might in Red Rock.
Might.
You might with WNM communication.
So we, uh, you know, we're still going to have those rural precincts, the individuals from those communities can vote there in their communities or come into our, uh, voter convenience centers and utilize those. Uh, early voting will be conducted here in our office, uh, like it's always been, as long, uh, as well as absentee voting. And then we'll have an early, uh, voting alternative out there at the Bed Community Center.
Okay. Any questions on that?
Sheriff?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve Resolution R 1374, the setting and polling locations for 2014 June primary and November general election.
I beg it.
There's a motion, a second to approve Resolution R 1374, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six, five, say aye, please.
Aye.
Passes. Okay. Bids, approve or disapprove, Bid Number B 1303, Group Health Benefits for the Grant County Managers Office. John, you want to go over that?
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. Um, this is what we spoke about with, uh, Mr. Rydeski in a previous meeting. Um, when we talked with the state, what they wanted us to do is go ahead and go out for a formal bid, so we went ahead and did that, and this is the group insurance for the entire county. So, Mr. Rydeski has gone out, we, we've worked with him to go out, he is our, our broker, and we have the contract that the commission approved for him as our broker. Came back with, I think it was everything we spoke about before, nothing has changed. Um, it would be Presbyterian Health Plan, two options, there would be a PPO option for the employees and an HMO option. Um, and he has in your packet the rates, and the rates have not changed from what he previously presented to the Commissioners. Um, Delta Dental of New Mexico, PPO. Um, this is the one that covers all of our doctors, and at the time of the last presentation, there was only two that were not in-network. Um, I don't know if that's changed, but Mr. Rydeski had told us at that meeting he would work with those doctors to see if he could get them to be in-network doctors, so if people use them. It's up to that doctor whether or not they want to be in. So this will give us, um, and it has the deductibles and the, the maximums that we had. The next is the Vision, it's a Reliance Standard VSP Network Option. Currently under the state, we have VSP. Um, this will be the same network, they lease the network from VSP, it's a different company, but it's the same doctors that we currently have under the VSP program. Um, then there's, um, the life insurance and accidental death insurance, there's a Reliance Standard. Um, we do 50,000 county paid policy to all our employees currently, we continue that. Um, and then they would have the option to buy more life insurance based on the employee. Um, each employee on their own could be voluntarily pay for more, and they would pay for all of that, but the county provides 50,000. There's a voluntary short-term disability, which is currently what we receive, um, no change in that. Uh, the county, the, one change is the long-term disability. Right now, we have a voluntary, and as Mr. Rydeski presented, it's a 40% with a maximum of 24 months of long-term disability. Um, under this, the bid came in as a Reliance Standard, it'll be a 60% benefit of your monthly wage up to a 5,000, and it goes to the age of retirement. So it all depends on what your age is, it goes to the age of 65. Um, and so- The, um, and, and that would be, his recommendation to the commission at the time he presented this was that Grant County pay for that instead of it being voluntary. That it's not a large premium cost, 40, 42 cents per $100 of covered payroll, um, that it's really not a lot of money, and it would be a great benefit to our employees. And then the last is the voluntary accident, critical illness is a Reliance Standard. Um, it'll be up to provide an insurance product that will provide liquidated, liquidity to families in case of an accident or of a critical illness. Um, it, it'll all depend on those individuals, that's a voluntary that will be added to them. Overall, what this does, for the county, this bid coming in, it actually, um, gives us better coverage than we currently have for our employees because there are certain things that we spoke about that, under the current health insurance that we are, um, if you have to go see a specialist or have, doctor, you have to pay your, your deductible before you get into your co-pay. Under these programs, you'll go right into your co-pay and you won't have to pay that deductible first, so that'll actually save those employees, um, anywhere from $400 to $700, depending on what insurance plan they are on, because that's the deductibles for those. Um, one thing is, this already includes the Affordable Healthcare Act, um, provisions that are coming forward that will increase, we've received from the state, but they are already saying that there's going to be another 15% increase in healthcare at a minimum. If we stay with them, this locks us in for a year, and it actually is almost a $10,000 a month savings, just shy of $10,000 a month savings, and that's after paying the fees for Mr. Rydeski to be our broker and the insurance. It's saving us almost $10,000 a month, whereas, under the state's plan, we will, like I said, see an increase of 15% on about a $1.8 million bill. So it's a very large increase to the county. So, yeah, I, I think this is a really good plan. Um, I thank Mr. Rydeski, he's here in the audience today, he's done a lot of work- He's done a lot of work already.
When does it start?
January 1. Because of everything that happened with the state, they were going to make us go into another, we just went in, had to go into an open enrollment with our employees July. And they were making us go into another one January 1. That's why we decided if we have to go through all the paperwork of every employee filling out new forms again for the state, we might as well, that's a time to change. And so we've geared this to change. One of the differences that will happen is because of our agreement with Mr. Rydeski now, he's actually going to come in and help us through that process where the state doesn't do anything for us in that process. He's also going to help us with new enrollment of employees. When we have a new employee come on, they'll go see him. He'll get them enrolled in the insurance programs, whereas Renee Calley, our HR specialist, is doing that now. And he'll also, the employees, if they're having an issue with the insurance, fighting a claim, something like that, he acts as an advocate for them. Because he doesn't work for any of the insurance companies. He works for us and brokers to any of them.
So actually, this is for group health benefits for Grant County?
For the Grant County. Yes. The managers' offices who put up the bid, but it's for the entire county. This is, this will be all county employees that we provide insurance to. Currently, we don't provide insurance to part-time and temporary employees. This is only full-time, regular employees that receive insurance.
Okay.
Motion to approve Bid Number B 1303, Group Health Benefits for Grant County.
I beg it.
There's a motion in second to approve B 1303. Is there any discussion on the motion? I, for one, just am very happy that we're doing business locally again.
Yes.
It's been one of the priorities of this commission since the beginning. And we're going to continue to go that way because it's the only way we grow ourselves is through ourselves, so.
Got to butter our own bread.
There you go. Okay. All those in favor, six, five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much, Robert, for all your hard work and diligence of getting this put together and saving us some money, too. At this time, I take a motion to recess as the Grant County Board of Commissioners.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, six, five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And I'll call to order the Grant County Indigent and Healthcare, Health Plan Claims Board. This time, you want to go over the claims, John?
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. In your packet, you have the claims dated October 31, 2013. They've been approved by Mr. Zamora. In that packet, there is a total of 1,275 claims totaling $581,872.40. Of that amount, 1,273 claims totaling $573,130. $573,130.86 is part of the sole community provider piece that we send up to the state. And the remainder, two claims are out-of-county claims for $8,741.54. Those are the indigent claims. As far as I know, nothing has changed on the status of sole community provider. They've given us the numbers through December, but nobody knows what it's going to look like come January 1.
Talk a little bit about the 1/8th or the 1/16th that they're trying to take out of this and where it's coming from, where it's going, just for the audience.
Yeah.
Here and also in TV land knows what's going on with that and what it's going to do to our hospital.
Yeah. The state is, I guess, putting together a proposal is what we understand to go to legislature, that currently the counties have the ability to pass local gross receipts tax in the amounts of, there's 2 1/8ths and 1/16th of a tax for indigent and sole community provider healthcare. Those taxes come into the counties. We're responsible for those. What they're trying to do is get the state to take those away from us so that the local residents would pay that tax, but instead of it coming back to Grant County, it would be intercepted at the state level and go to the Department of Health, or not Department of Health, yes. Health and Human Services, Department of Health and Human Services. And then they would pass that along to the four managed care organizations they have contracts with, and they would decide who gets that money. So there's no guarantee that it would come back to Hela Regional Medical Center. There's no guarantee it would be distributed. Currently, the one thing that they have told us is that the managed care organizations would take an administrative fee for administering that money, whereas currently there is no administrative fees. Well, there's administrative fees taken at the state level for sending us our check back, and then they would take another administrative fee for these managed care organizations. So it would really cut down the funding and give no guarantee to Hela Regional. Whereas if they left the money coming here and the federal money that we send up this money for as a match wasn't there anymore, Grant County could use that money to go directly to Hela Regional Medical Center and pay them directly. An eighth of a gross receipts tax generates about $670,000 last year to Grant County. So you're looking at the 2/8ths and a 1/16th, we're roughly about $1.6 million that Grant County comes in on that tax that we could distribute directly to Hela Regional, but if the state started taking it, we would have no control. So none of the counties are for it, especially the larger counties like Burnaleo, because to them, it's millions of dollars and there's no guarantee it comes back into their community. It gets distributed to whoever the managed care organizations have contracts with and how they deem it be distributed. And the state can have no authority over telling them how to distribute the monies, is what they've told us. They would just basically turn over a blank check to them and say, "Do what you wish with it." So that's kind of my understanding of where we're at. We are prepared to fight legislature, any legislation that comes out. Work with our local representatives there. To the best of my knowledge, I don't, I have not heard that they're for the state taking that. They're fighting to keep it here locally. They're not in, Senator Morales has really been a big help to us. He's been on the conference calls. He's got as much information. He's got us information. We don't have it. So they're really working hard, our local delegation, to make sure that money stays here and these hospitals stay whole, because it can really cripple the rural hospitals.
Yeah. Now, one of the things that Health and Human Services has done is they're trying to divide the hospitals from the counties in the respect of this issue. They're telling the hospitals, "Well, you're probably not going to get any money if we don't get this gross receipts intercept." That's not true. But they're trying to divide and conquer.
Yeah. One thing that they've done, whenever they've had their conference calls, they've never had a conference call where we're all, all the different players are on the same phone. They make sure they do one with the Hospital Association, then they do one with the county hospital, the public hospitals, then they do one with the government entities, and they always keep us separate and they never let us be on the phone calls together. And so what we do as Grant County is when we get an email saying they want to have a conference call with the county managers on this issue, I go ahead and pass it on to the hospital and I pass it on to our legislative representatives so that I invite them to come and sit in the conference call with me. So I'm making sure we're all sitting at the table, so as they're saying things, we can say what we've heard in other conference calls and make sure we're all on the same page.
The word is that they're threatening a bed tax again, so, so anyway. Thank you very much, John. Can I get a motion to approve the healthcare, health plan claims?
Motion to approve the October 2013 Health Plan Claims Indigent Fund.
I beg it.
There's a motion in a second to approve the Health Plan Claims. Is there any discussion on that motion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, six, five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And at this time, I take a motion to adjourn the Grant County Indigent Healthcare Claims Board.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, six, five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Call back to order the Grant County Board of Commissioners, and we'll stand for county reports, and we'll start with Sheriff today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Just wanted to report, we're getting ready for the holidays. It'll be a very busy season for us, so we're planning ahead, trying to get prepared for it. Hopefully, it won't be that bad. Hopefully, have a good holiday season. I did want to address a concern that's been brought forward by the citizens of Grant County in regards to Silver City police officers running traffic out on the highways, out in the municipalities of Beard, Central, Santa Clara, and Hurley. I just wanted to let the community know that they have been commissioned by me as the sheriff to run an operation, a special operation that they're working on currently. It's pertaining to a grant that requires them to work the highways. And the reason why I support this is that it not only benefits Grant County, it also is a proactive approach towards dealing with drug trafficking and money laundering and just dealing with things coming in and out of Grant County. Grant County's highways are corridor up north and down south towards Mexico, dealing with narcotics and money being distributed through these drug organizations that we're dealing with. So for that reason, I support this program, this grant that they're working, and they have been given the commission. And I just see it that it's going to benefit us in the long run. It not only gives me a little bit more to look forward to, but it also gives us additional patrols on the highways and gives us the opportunity to deter what is coming through Grant County or coming through our highways. They utilize our highways on 180 West to head up north, and they also use up 90 South. So by them patrolling these areas, it helps us out with them doing traffic stops. And being in law enforcement as long as I've been, running traffic, you can uncover a lot of stuff just by making a traffic stop. And I believe that that's going to benefit us. And that's why I will support this, and I want this to continue to happen, because we will uncover something, not only just drugs or money, we might uncover other crimes that are occurring in Grant County or other things that are coming through Grant County. So for that reason, I will continue to do this. And I just want to let the public know, I have met with the chief on some of the concerns that were brought forward by some of the residents. They are only allowed to be 15 miles out of Grant County, out of Silver City limits. If there's any concerns by any of the citizens, I'm more than welcome to take phone calls. They can call me at the office and I'll answer what I can. I know some of you commissioners are getting calls. If you want to refer them to me, I'd be more than happy to talk to them. But being that this is being said, you might be able to just explain to them what's going on. There was a media release done by Chief Reynolds in regards to this, so it has been put out to the public. I know some people do not receive the newspapers and stuff like that, so they don't know. But, you know, it is a positive thing and it's a proactive thing, and I will continue to support it. Other than that, Commissioners, I have nothing else to report unless you have any questions.
Have the Social Security Department received any kind of additional training in reference to the laundering and/or transportation of drugs?
Yes, they have. The entity that provided that grant to them required to take certain training, just like we do when we do Stone Garden. We have to have certain training in regards to it, so they are required to have training to be able to go out there and do what we do with these monies.
Are they providing the same coverage inside the city limits during these times when they're outside the city limits as they normally do for the people that they're hired to protect to begin with?
Yes, this is actually all done during, this money provides for overtime for them to do it off-hours, so it's not taking away from the city coverage. It's actually, they're working it just like we do on Stone Garden, we do it on our off-time, where we're providing extra coverage. It's not during our business hours of operation, it's actually overtime.
Well, I'm glad to hear that you talked to them, because as I relate to you earlier, they're way outside their 15 miles. There's been several cases of complete discourteousness from their officers, and I know your officers never do that. You run a nice, tight ship. I'm not sure about Silver City. I think they're, they're very young. They're not as mature as your group. I'm not totally in favor of this. I know you are. I'm getting lots of calls. There's lots of people not happy, and I'm not sure Silver City is getting the coverage that they normally ought to get. So that's my opinion on the deal, so.
Chairman, I would recommend, or I'd like, if possible, if you would let me know, they would call me, because like I said, I did meet with the chief and he was made aware of some of the concerns. When I did commission these officers, they were told that they would operate the way they're supposed to operate, and they'd have guidelines in regards to how they treat the public out in the county. Silver City is their own jurisdiction. Grant County is our jurisdiction. But if I can, please get names and I'll address it with the chief, and the chief will take care of the way people are being treated. Thank you.
I'll do that. Anything else? Okay. Madam?
Chairman, Commissioners, I was really happy to say that I have two employees in the office that are appraisers. They both took their International Association of Assessing Officers class recently, and they both passed. Carrie Powers, one, and Zan Peralta, the other. Carrie is one course away from becoming a New Mexico Certified Appraiser. And then I have another employee in the office, Ms. Di Trillo. She is also one course away from becoming a New Mexico Certified Appraiser. And I know I'm just talking about the women, but I do have men in the office, too, and I will be sending them to classes as well. And that's it. Until I have.
Thank you very much. Rob, you got anything today?
No.
John?
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. I just wanted to let the commission know that our audit has been completed and sent to the state auditor's office. It was in on time. So we're now just awaiting the review and approval of the state auditor's office so that we could go ahead and release that as a public document. It is, by state law, it's not public until the state auditor approves it, and then you have to wait five days after his approval to become a public document. So we will be waiting that. We'll let the commissioners know as soon as we get it. Mr. Gutierrez isn't here today because he's working on the Prospectors. They have their forum where you meet with the legislators, so he's putting together our application and our packet. One thing that has changed from the past legislative sessions is, and it's nothing the Prospectors did, it's coming down from BFA, I guess, in administration of the state. It used to be that we always presented our top five priorities, and the top five things that you put on your ICIP were the things that really got attention to be funded. Well, they've decided now that they only wish to look at the top three things, so they're limiting back what they want to fund. So now, what we're hearing is if an item is not in the top three of your ICIP priorities, you may get vetoed when it goes if you get capital outlay for it. So that's one thing that has changed, so we will only be presenting our top three priorities on our ICIP to, at the legislative forum the Prospectors put on. And so they've filled out a questionnaire that asks if your audit is in. It asks different questions that the legislators would like to know so that when they go up to Santa Fe, they can answer those questions, when they're quizzed, when they're looking at trying to get us capital outlay. So our top three projects are this facility with the Sheriff's Vault that we received the money and the front, the number two. I just rattled them off to Anthony yesterday and now I can't remember them. Our number two priority was the Convention Center, and then number three priority was the, I can't believe, I think it was the fair, possibly?
I think it was the fair.
Oh. And the...
The sixth.
So, can't remember. I'll have to get with Anthony to get you that. He sent you the ICIP. But we'll present those. The Prospectors will be meeting for Legislative Day, the 29th of January, up in Santa Fe, so we will be attending that to go to those meetings. They try and set up meetings with cabinet secretaries. The session starts on the 21st at noon with the State of the State address from the governor and opening session, and we will be there for that, because the Association of Counties is that week. So session will start on the Tuesday. Like I said before, we're just looking at it being a rough session. Priscilla's here and gave a presentation on the broadcast. She's an excellent resource. She's been up there, I think, almost all year. Every time I call, Priscilla's in Santa Fe, really fighting for us, fighting on the capital outlay stuff. She's really been working hard for us on our $300,000 that the legislature gave us last year. Every time we turn around, first it was they sent the agreement to Silver City, then they wouldn't send an agreement to us because I needed to fill out a questionnaire to go into bond sale. Then they sent me an agreement and told me to go ahead and sign it. Then they called and said, "Don't sign it because we still need to do a questionnaire to go into bond sale." Then they called the other day and said that we missed the deadline to go into bond sale because we needed to go online and fill out an application, the questionnaire. When we go online to fill out the questionnaire, Grant County's not listed as having any projects that need to go into bond sale, and it's still under Silver City's name. And then Anthony talks to somebody and supposedly we filled out a questionnaire in February and we went in the bond sale in July, and so we might be getting an agreement again. I don't know. So that's kind of what's happened. So that's kind of what's happened since January.
Government as usual.
So, which is kind of strange, which, yeah, it's kind of strange that we filled out a questionnaire in February when the session wasn't even over yet and we had our money yet, but I filled out a questionnaire, so I don't know. So, we may or may not get an agreement. Priscilla's been fighting for us and she's been through it more than I have. She's usually the one calling me going, "Okay, you might get it," and then she calls me back, "No, you're not going to get it, they sent you one, tear it up." So, I've torn up three agreements, so we don't know.
Just had these music chairs that we've been going through. Santa Fe lost a lot of the expertise from people who's had the years in those chairs and know the history of the different communities and they're gone.
Yeah, well, and it's all over through government, unfortunately, you know, I don't think anybody's left at DFA that was there, it's all new except for the secretary.
I'm going to yield the rest of your time to Priscilla.
That's fine. Thank you very much. Sorry, John.
That's why I give you a couple of things that I learned every time you're, you're right, John, every time we go, it's something new. So from here on in, my understanding is state border finance, everything is going paperless, so anything that you do with anything at state border finance, it has to be done online. And then, of course, if you don't know what your password is and your username, we're using the ICIP password and username for that, but I have to agree with John, it's been one of the most chaotic years I think I've dealt with in projects all around. But I wanted to mention as well that the next application round for Colonias is March 1st. I want to start to begin to think about what we could apply for and with regards to the agreement for the 2013 award, they can't even give us a date when we'll see an agreement. We tried to pin that down the other day because we had a Colonias Board meeting in Rodoso and they couldn't even give us that date. We're just now, after probably a year and a half, getting the last of the Colonias grants agreements for 2012. So, so we're trying to push that along because it doesn't reflect.
I've never seen it this shuffled.
I would agree.
I worked with them for eight years and it seemed like everything...
So normally, also just to let you know on community development grant, normally at this point, we're already in the application phase and getting them ready to submit by mid-January. This year, now the application workshop won't be held till about mid-March with an application being due about mid-May. So those are the kinds of things that we're seeing and so it's extremely frustrating when you're told one thing one day and then the next day it's completely different. And so in our best attempt, we're trying to guide these communities the best way we know how. I did want to mention with regards to capital outlay, this is a new rule too and I don't know if you're all familiar with that, that they're asking for minimum requests. If it's on the House side, a minimum of a $50,000 request, on the Senate side, it's a $100,000 minimum request. That is something new that we've never done before. So, how that's all going to play out at the end?
Less projects that way.
How that's going to play out at the end, but just to let you know since you're in the process of doing that.
Okay. You got a question, John? Yeah, I was just going to, like Priscilla said, they make us do everything electronically now, but then with the ICIP, what they made us do is they made us print it all out and mail it to them because they didn't want to look at it online. And so we had to submit it electronically, but they wouldn't accept the electronic submission. We had to print out the electronic submission and mail it to a hard copy because the girl just didn't have time and we couldn't email it to her because she just didn't want her email box clogged up with our junk. So it had to be a physical hard copy mailed to them.
So Mary Allison's is very humorous, but maybe she liked to take over my job. But with regards to the capital improvement plan, with regards to the ICIP, John, I got to say that with the new director, that was one of his first frustrations when he took office. So what we're hearing already is looking at a different way of doing it, so hopefully...
This is Ryan's place.
Wayne Sow is the one who took Ryan Gleason's place. We have a new deputy, which her name is Jessica Lucero, we have a new line bureau chief, we have a new budget or interim budget division director. The budget division is down to about three budget analysts, so they are not going to have a budget conference this year, so they're planning to have a budget conference next year. They're requiring certifications of all the water districts in order for them to receive funding from capital outlay, which most water districts do not have a certification, so now we're having to get certification forms for them and the list goes on. But if you have any other questions with regards to what we're working on, I'd be happy to answer them.
Because Commissioner Ramos asked me this question, he's on the phone, is, we got a request and it was late to get on this agenda to be fiscal agent for the veterans for capital outlay, but with the requirements that they've put now that they're only going to fund the top three ICIP, groups that aren't government entities don't have an ICIP, so even if they come and ask us to be fiscal, if they're not in our top three, there's no way they're going to get funded, is what we're hearing, I guess. Is that what you're understanding?
Right, you know, that's my understanding of the rule. The only other thing that I could suggest is that if all else fails, if you want to do amend your ICIP and put them in a priority in the priority year, that's the only other thing. I mean, I think it's difficult to forecast about what could potentially happen, we know what happened last year, even if in our best attempt to make sure that everybody was in good standing, we still had some fiscal agent issues, no matter what, as much as we tried. So, I mean, those are things I think we can just take it, it may change when they put their numbers in there. I know from a capital outlay bureau and the governor's office, they're looking at those things consistently and you all remember that we had to submit the capital outlay request, once the capital outlay requests were in, then we had to do questionnaires, which were the same questions on the capital improvement plan and on the capital outlay request. We got those submitted and then we got funded, we had to do questionnaires again, you know, so those are the ongoing things and so all of those are running on very short deadlines. So we may get notice, in some cases 24 hours notice, sometimes a week's notice. Yesterday, we got a notice, like with an hour and a half to go by the end of the day, a list of communities that had not done their questionnaires. So we just do the best we can and it's hard for me because I don't want to see the communities miss out on their opportunities. Thank goodness in my region, everything was taken care of, but we started yesterday early morning trying to take care of that.
Okay. Thank you very much. I don't know. Thank you very much, you betcha.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ramos, you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Would you like to have a report?
Yeah, well, I wanted to ask, John, does the Water Service have given us a name for a water shit echo group?
Yes, a gentleman called and left me a voicemail, I'll pass it on to you, I'll put it into an email and send it on to you. I can't remember the name off the top of my head. He is the one that deals with their watersheds and is over several other groups and so I will get you that name and phone number today.
Yeah, we've been waiting for over a month, so we look to appreciate giving that name. So what we wanted to, John, is go ahead and get to our first organizational meeting for 1 o'clock on Wednesday at the Red Room.
Okay.
And we can ask the Nisha, go ahead and locate all the individuals that are going to participate and let them know.
Okay.
And also, when are we going to have our interview for the audit?
We, what we did is because of timelines, we had to have one, I will get with you and let you know what they said. Because of the timelines, the auditor had to come in at the beginning of last week and he did it with the chairman. Is the requirement by state, we at least have one there and so the chairman was available and so we had to do it. Real quick, we didn't have time to call a meeting with the three days so he could make the timeline to get our audit in. And so I will get with you...
I understand with this, with the new law, it's going to be hard to do that?
Yeah, no, and I'll, what I'll do is I'll get with you when you're back and I'll let Commissioner Hall know, just didn't, nothing is put in writing yet because of it being like an executive session type of thing.
Probably just do an executive session at the next meeting and go over it.
Okay, sure, good. Also, John, I wanted to know, have you spoke with the City of Beard about the walkway between Beard and Santa Clara, do you where that's at?
And Priscilla's still here, my understanding is that we were working on that grant. Grant County had pledged to do some of the in-kind services and do the match. It came down to some issues of fiscal agent status and that grant has gone by. Priscilla's at the mic that you can inform you, and before she starts...
Can you get her to go through the mic because I'm really having a lot of trouble hearing the speakers on the floor.
And before she, I just wanted to ask, is that meeting you want, is it tomorrow or next Wednesday?
Next Wednesday, next Wednesday.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
The day before Thanksgiving?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Ramos, that was an application that was going to be submitted under the Transportation Alternative Project, which was a new pot of money that is now given to the regional planning organizations for the purposes of allocating those funds to communities. And this is the first time that the Department of Transportation has actually given us funding for projects in the communities. So what happened is that initially, John offered to provide in-kind cash for that project and then when we got to a meeting with the Department of Transportation, the Department of Transportation said, "Well, we can't use in-kind for engineering, the county would have to put up cash dollars." And for us, that was the same day that we had to get these applications done and in and so therefore we did not have the authority to submit the application without having the okay from the county for the purposes of providing that cash match.
And how much was that cash match?
Depended on the project, it went anywhere from about $35,000 to $50,000.
Yeah, so, so where we are now on that, Gabe, is that we can continue to move forward. The 2014 funds and the 2015 funds have been allocated, so therefore there'll be another, what we call call for projects for the transportation alternative. So when that comes about, we can resubmit that for consideration for the next funding cycle. We are going to continue to see those funds come to the cog, under the regional planning organization for distribution to our area, so what we can do is reapply in the next funding cycle, which would be 2016.
Well, I think that's a heck of a project, I think that we really do need it. Seeing people walk between Beard and Santa Clara all the time actually scares me as a driver. Seeing these kids walk to school and back home through the highway really scares me and I really feel that this is a well-worked project that we really need to support.
And I agree, Commissioner Ramos, it's also important to note, I think one of the things that also happened with that project was with regards to the fiscal agent and that was initially, we were going to have the City of Beard serve as the fiscal agent, but really that project does lie within the Santa Clara village limits. So what we've done to prepare for the next go-around is actually we've listed that project on the capital improvement plan, because now that's a requirement for DOT, so we have that listed on there so that we can move forward and be prepared for the next funding cycle.
Santa Clara's ICIP.
Correct. Santa Clara's...
Is it in the top three?
Correct.
No, it's in the top five, but nonetheless, DOT does not require that it be in the top five.
No.
It's only capital outlay. So any potential project that we're going to be seeking funding for in that specific year, then we have to put it in that priority year.
All right, well, thanks a lot, Priscilla, I know you always do us well and I appreciate all the information you give us.
You're welcome, call me with any questions, Gabe.
Most definitely. The next thing I've got for you, John, is has Gilbert Alton made contact with FEMA? Mayor Bausch and I met with Army Corps of Engineers for about six hours last Thursday and we were over in Santa Clara looking at the flood damage from the last storm and I tell you what, walking through, there was a lot more damage than I ever imagined and according to Army Corps of Engineers, we really need to speak with FEMA. Time was of the essence when I asked you to please have Gilbert speak with them and figure things out. Has he made contact with them?
Yeah, I forwarded you an email that Mr. Helton sent on to me, he actually met with them and representatives of Santa Clara yesterday and the status has not changed. They went through the area. Grant County and Santa Clara do not meet the thresholds for any funding, is what the FEMA representatives told him yesterday and they told the Village of Santa Clara. And so I forwarded you an email from him to your email. I'll check to see if it didn't go, but I forwarded on and he did a summary of that meeting and what they had said, but we do not meet the thresholds and that information that you passed along to me, I had passed on to him, but it was only good for those counties that were listed and Grant County, even Capuchin County was not listed to be able to get funding, but Luna County was.
Indeed, every, all the information we get from people contradicts each other because Army Corps of Engineers said as long as the state of New Mexico was considered a national emergency, we would qualify. And, but we have to go through FEMA first.
Yeah.
We got to figure this thing out because, I mean, getting this kind of information, we got to, time is of the essence, so we got to really do something to this out.
Well, and like I said, FEMA said yesterday that we do not qualify and so Anthony's coming up here to give some more input because he was, Gilbert's under his authority?
Okay, awesome.
Gabe, the reason we don't qualify doesn't have to do with whether or not there's an emergency declaration, it has to do with the amount of damage, it has to do with the dollar amount. There's a formulary for the population of Grant County, the amount of damage that is done and it was, our threshold is like $130,000 and we haven't met that threshold yet, that's why we don't qualify for any federal funds.
So then it would actually be damage done to property owners or damage done to city property because property owners, there's definitely over $150,000 worth of damage.
There's a huge difference. Most often, the private property owners don't qualify for federal funds, it's just like, it's just like state funds and local government funds, only public properties and only properties that belong...
Is that because of insurance?
It has to do with insurance. If you sustained damage to private property, it's supposed to be covered under land insurance.
Okay, all right, well, I guess we got some more false information because Army Corps of Engineers said that they would cover up to $15,000 per household, I believe, is the numbers they were giving us, so I don't know, I guess we get information, it is gospel and it's not, so it's kind of disappointing.
Yeah, and like I said, I know Gilbert's been working on it and I'll reforward you that email again in case you didn't get it, but that's what FEMA's telling us now, so he met with them and they're saying, "No, you don't get anything, nothing has changed."
Does Gilbert have something in writing from them?
I don't know if he does, we'll check with him. It was just that meeting, it was a verbal conversation at that meeting where they went through and they said, "No, this does not, this is an area that doesn't..."
Was Mayor Bausch at the meeting?
Mayor Bausch was there at the meeting, so, you know...
Well, in the meantime, I'll contact Army Corps of Engineers because they're going to put together a big report for us and I'll get that to Anthony, we can start working on it.
Okay, yeah, no, and Gilbert's, our contact, he's got a contact with the FEMA group and the Homeland Security Group and so that's why we're going through him because he's got the best and quickest connection into those groups and to get them down here.
Well, for next time, I'd really like to be in the loop, I know that I'm only one commissioner, but I definitely need to be in the loop on this because we're really trying to do the right thing and being that I was involved with the Army Corps of Engineers, I want to make sure that what they're saying is true.
No, and I'll definitely, we'll pass that on to Gilbert. I didn't know of the meeting until I got the email saying that he had met with them, otherwise we would have, I would have informed you of it, but he just sent me the email recapping what the meeting was about and what they had said and so we would have that information.
That's all, thank you very much.
Anything else, Commissioner?
That's all, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Hall?
Well, since I was involved with the last meeting we had, I used up some of the time I would have today. John, just joking. And out we go. Mr. Ramos, I want some time taken out for him for the next meeting also, but anyway, my drill short is, just from one meeting that I thought was very important that we've had since the last meeting, it's a meeting that we had with John, Mr. Robinson and Mr. Cuff from Cliff in reference to the wrecked community building in Cliff. We was looking at some plans and trying to figure out exactly where we're going to put the rest in the kitchen and also a substation for the sheriff's office and state police and such and I also... Office and State Police and such, and I also talked to the sheriff about that, so that's come along really well. Sissy, we lost a good one, we got another vacant building downtown, and I need to bring this up, because, you know, Connors Jewelry and/or the family, or those smets have been in this community for 70 years, and we've lost them. So, I, I want to thank Mike and Penny Connors for, uh, being a good community members for all those years, and that building's going to be vacant, and they will certainly be messed as far as their personalities are concerned. Uh, we haven't reported anything on our student athletes, they're doing some great jobs. We got, in football, we've got both Colby and Silver, uh, they're in the playoffs, Silver are going to be, uh, playing Hope Christian, uh, this weekend, and Colby will be playing Dexter, so they're still in the hunt for state championships, both of them are. Uh, also, I want to bring up Western volleyball team doing an excellent job, the women, uh, they came, they finished up with 23 and 5, and, uh, we've been playing tonight, I believe, at 7 o'clock, uh, to continue their playoff endeavor, so that's it, I'll cut it short.
Okay.
Um, for my, my report, I just have a, a request of the audience to, to get back with us if they have any concerns on the, the, uh, application for Santa Clara to annex Forbear Road, because actually, after the last meeting, when we told them we didn't have any objections, I've had a couple of phone calls with people that had objections, and, and it was simply this, that they felt as though Santa Clara may not have the wherewithal to maintain that road, uh, up to the standards its county has kept it. So if there's other people that have those issues, I, I hope they get with us, um, prior to that application, because we don't want to, um, hit Mayor Bausch on the, on the side, we want to be upfront with him and let him know that there's these, these issues and these people coming forward now. Um, and other than that, I don't have anything else, so...
Oh, just one thing?
No, seconds.
The, uh, uh, article that was in the paper about tiles, we are not having lunch together, this commission isn't okay.
Today.
Today.
Never, never.
Anything else?
Never.
Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So, look.
Second.
All those favors in the top saying, "I'm, I'm..."
Motion passed.